Okay, I told Jason that I was gonna give you a commercial sometime. I have to do that, that's my job. Joel Beekie does it, so I feel like I can do it. Nobody's laughing. All right, as our brother told you, I'm president of seminary over in Mansfield. It's about two and a half hours away. Left my house at 7:30 this morning, got rolled in here just about at 10 o'clock. Nice, easy drive down I-20. For 20 years, we were in Southern California at Westminster Seminary. We decided that the opportunity and the time was right, and that the Lord was giving us the means by which we could develop our own full seminary program. And so in 2018, I moved with my wife and my daughter to Mansfield, and we began our program. Things have been really good and very encouraging. We've recently made some interesting changes to our program. Would be glad to talk to any of you about them, especially the degree programs, which are now all available virtually by distance. And if anybody's interested, I'd be glad to talk to you about them. I was also telling Jason at lunch about our church sponsorship program, where we enter into partnership with churches, and the churches help to support us financially, and we have all kinds of things that we make available to the churches. I won't take the time to talk about them now. If you have any questions afterwards, please feel free to ask me. And I can tell you about that, but I've told Jason about it. We decided that we didn't want to just ask churches for money, we wanted to do everything that we could to help them. So, for example, students from sponsoring churches don't pay tuition. They pay $100 administrative fee per course, it's a flat fee, but they don't pay tuition. So the total cost for our degree is approximately $5,500, which is pretty amazing. One thing that I did want to talk about, though, we have one, I brought with me, and they're on the table just beyond the window there, some brochures about the seminary, give you an idea of our professors, our programs, and all that we're doing. But also, I brought with me several copies of this. I did this about 15 years ago, I think. It's called "Daily Treasure: 366 Daily Readings from the Treasury of David by C.H. Spurgeon." It's all Spurgeon, it's just rearranged from Spurgeon for a daily devotional. And if you're looking for something to use in the coming year, I would suggest to you that this might be very helpful. How many of you have ever looked at Spurgeon's Treasury of David? Anybody? It's fantastic. It's seven big volumes, in which he goes through the Psalms, all 150 Psalms. And what I did was, I took readings from all of the 150, in the order that you find them in the Book of Psalms, 1 through 150. A portioned them out for a reading each day. There's one page per day, so it's excerpted from, I just happened to look here, on the 28th of July, it's Psalm 88, verses 10 through 18, and Spurgeon's comments on them, and then there's a meditation at the bottom that apparently he took from William Gernot. It's very helpful stuff. If you were to, this just came out, it's a second edition. If you were to buy it on Amazon, it would cost you, I think, $23.99, $24.99, something like that. We bought many of them, so I can make it available to you today for $15, which is significantly less than you would have to pay on Amazon. But because it's Spurgeon and not me, I can say it's a really good devotional for the year. I won't promote my own stuff, but if you're interested, we have probably 10 copies of them back there, and I would love to have you take them and get them to you at the best possible price. Now, I realized this morning, when Jason introduced me, that what I had prepared could have been expanded significantly. Maybe you could tell by the speed that I was going at this morning, that there's a lot more to say than time allows. And so, I wish that I could have slowed down this morning, but I wanted to get to the material about the New Creation and the New Exodus, and show how our day is directly related to the work of Christ and what He has done. What I want to do is look at this, what seems to be a problem text in Colossians, Chapter 2. We'll work our way through that, and then, maybe if time permits, we can talk about some other things, for example, the moral law and its abiding validity. There's some interesting things to think about there. I asked Jason, you know, what's the cutoff time, and you know, how long can I go? He says, "Oh, go, just go." But, they said in the weather report at home, that there could be heavy weather tonight. So I'd like to hit the highway before the heavy weather comes in, and it's supposed to be coming in from the west. So I figure, what, 6:30, something like that? Yeah, okay. You're good, you're good, folks. No, we're aiming at 3:30, the very latest, and that will include some question and answer time, all right? So, just so you know. All right, let's take a look at Colossians, Chapter 2. A really important passage, and let's hear what the Word of God says to us, and then be careful in the way that we work through it. Okay, Colossians 2, verses 16, and, well, we'll read through verse 19. "Therefore, in light of our life in Christ, therefore, let no one pass judgment on you in questions of food and drink, or with regard to a festival, or a new moon, or a Sabbath. These are shadows of the things to come, but the substance belongs to Christ. Let no one disqualify you, insisting on asceticism and worship of angels, going on in detail about visions, puffed up without reason by a sensuous mind, and not holding fast to the head, from whom the whole body, nourished and knit together through its joints and ligaments, grows with a growth that is from God." All right? "Let no one pass judgment on you with regard to a festival, or a new moon, or a Sabbath." But the guy who preached this morning said, "We have the obligation to keep a Sabbath." He contradicted what Paul said! I know that guy. He didn't want to contradict what Paul said, but he has to wrestle with what Paul says here. Now, this passage is, at first glance, the strongest passage that speaks against a day, keeping a day under the New Covenant. "And brothers and sisters, we must give to it the full weight that it deserves." Okay? "We have no right to make it less direct than it is. We need to take it as it comes to us, treat it carefully, with respect, with the honor it deserves, and we must follow whatever it says to us." We must do this. Now, I admit to you, from the start, that it seems to indicate, its first reading, it seems to indicate that there is no Sabbath keeping for us at all, and since you've heard what I said this morning, this does appear to be a problem. So we have to handle this, I hope with integrity, I hope with honesty. Now, I will tell you this, "I desire with all my heart to be obedient to the Scriptures, and I desire to be faithful to everything that they say." That's my desire, that's my goal, that's what I want to do. Because of this, there are several issues that are similar to this one, that have made me stop, and think, and wrestle with the text of Scripture. I want to give you two examples, and I think that these examples will help you to understand what I'm getting at. The first of them, if you are like me, when you came to understand the doctrines of grace, you could understand the doctrine of total depravity, because you're a sinner, you know what that's like. And you could understand the doctrine of unconditional election, because you see that doctrine plainly laid out for us in Scripture. And you could understand the doctrine of irresistible grace or effectual calling, because you know that as a dead sinner, it was necessary for the Holy Spirit to call you out of the death of your sin, and you knew that perseverance of the saints is essential to the Christian life. So four of the five points of Calvinism, as they're called, you easily were able to adopt. But almost all of us struggled with limited atonement, or definite atonement, or particular redemption, whatever you want to call it, right? Are you like me? Because there are many passages in the New Testament that speak about Christ giving His blood for the world, Christ dying for all men. You read those passages, and you say, "How do you get to this doctrine of limited atonement from these passages?" And it took me a long time. I was raised in an evangelical church up in Massachusetts, when I became a believer at age 15. We were deeply involved with Campus Crusade for Christ. I knew the four spiritual laws by heart, I could talk to anybody and bring them through the four spiritual laws, and many people prayed the prayer with me at the end. There was no Calvinism there. But when wrestling with the doctrines of grace, this became the most difficult issue for me, and it was painful, and it took a long time. And I read texts like 1 John 2:2. "He is the propitiation for our sins, and not for ours only, but for the sins of the whole world." I read that, and I thought, "How does that fit with this doctrine that people are trying to help me with?" And it's interesting, that it was only by listening to a long series of exposition of universal passages by S. Lewis Johnson from Dallas, that helped me finally to think through that issue. It convinced me, but it took listening to him work his way through all of these passages. And I'm sure that you have had that struggle, that same struggle as I have had in the past, because you wanted to be honest with Scripture, right? Am I, you're with me here, you understand that difficulty and that problem, all right? Now, you don't now think that 1 John 2:2 teaches universal atonement. You've compared Scripture with Scripture, you understand that propitiation is a very important concept, and when you give propitiation its full meaning as it's expressed in the rest of Scripture, it begins to make that passage clear. "If propitiation is a blood sacrifice that turns away the wrath of God, and that has been done for the sins of all men, all people of all time, that means all people are saved." That would have to be the conclusion. But obviously, that's not what John is saying. And so we work Scripture by Scripture, and we're convinced, at least I was convinced, that my initial reading of that text and others like it were incorrect. That's how I worked through it, but it took some time. Let me give you another one, speaking in tongues. Look with me, we're in Colossians 2, but just turn in your Bibles to 1 Corinthians, Chapter Right at the end of the chapter, verse 36. "Was it from you that the Word of God came? Or are you the only ones it has reached? If anyone thinks he's a prophet or spiritual, he should acknowledge that the things I'm writing to are command of the Lord. If anyone does not recognize this, he is not recognized. So my brothers, earnestly desire to prophesy, and do not forbid speaking in tongues. But all things should be done decently in an order." Wow! Do not forbid speaking in tongues! And yet, if I were an elder in a church, and someone stood up and started speaking in tongues, I would stand up and say, "Be quiet and sit down." I would stop it immediately. Would I be violating Paul's command if I did that? See, I decided at one point in my Christian life, that if what Paul was saying is true for me today as a pastor, that I must be willing to pursue speaking in tongues. And I asked the question, "Why are they absent from my own experience and from my church?" But it was through careful study, and listening to men exegete the Scriptures, comparing Scripture with Scripture, thinking through the analogy of faith, as it's called, the analogy of Scripture and the analogy of faith, that I came to understand this passage, that Paul is speaking directly to the Corinthian church, and not laying down a universal principle that applies throughout all of the ages until the Lord returns, but rather that he's saying something to them, that speaking in tongues was given to the apostolic church as a sign, a specific sign, a specific purpose. The final word has come to us in Christ, and it's not necessary any longer to speak in tongues. And now I can read that passage through, and I cannot speak in tongues, and I can even forbid speaking people from... I need to slow down, don't I? Because I'm gonna start speaking in tongues by accident. I can forbid people from speaking in tongues and not blink, not think that I have disobeyed what the Scripture teaches. Now, that's two examples, okay? That you read something, and it seems straightforwardly to say to you, "Do this." But we work carefully with it, and we come to a conclusion that says, "No, it's not teaching me this. I don't need to pursue that, or it doesn't teach me about universal atonement, etc." You see, we come to the Scripture with deficiencies. We don't always understand language, or culture, or even theological progression, how things move from the old to the new. And what you and I need to do always, as we read the Bible, is ask ourselves this question: "Am I reading this correctly? Is my reading of this leading me to the right conclusion?" Or to put it another way, "Is it possible that I lack some information that might help me better to understand the passage before me?" Because it is possible that I don't have some information, maybe I don't understand the cultural moment, and what Paul, or one of the other writers, is saying in terms of culture. Or maybe I don't understand the progression from the old to the new. And so, these issues helped me to come to Colossians, Chapter 2, and think through the text that we have in front of us. It's because of these questions, and in light of the clear teaching of Hebrews, Chapter 4, that we need to revisit this passage. We need to do it honestly, carefully, and faithfully. And I hope that when I'm done today, what I want you to be able to say is, "This guy was honest with the text. He didn't manipulate it, he didn't force it in a direction, but he was honest with it." Even if you disagree with me, I want you to be able to say that about the way that I handled it, faithfully, okay? If we get it wrong, either way, we will disobey the Lord. So we have to be careful. Now, I'm convinced that Paul, in Colossians 2, exactly agrees with the author of Hebrews. He does not contradict him, because he tells us that the substance, the body, the permanent reality, is Christ. New moon, festivals, and Sabbaths. By the way, the ESV mistranslates the verse, because Sabbath is not singular, Sabbath is plural. You would do yourself a favor if you put a little "s" on the end of that in your Bible, because that's what Paul said, "Sabbath," not Sabbath singular. And that's important, as we work through the passage. "New moons, festivals, and Sabbaths were shadows. They looked back; they memorialized aspects of the Old Covenant. But now the substance has come, the body has come," to use the language here, "the fullness has come, and we have a day that memorializes that fullness." Just as we saw this morning, New Creation, New Exodus, or New Redemption, we have those things in Christ. Now, somebody right now is sitting in front of me, and says, "Wait a minute! Hold on! You say, 'It clearly says Sabbaths, and no one is to judge you.'" That's right. That's what it says. And we need to be honest with this. I'm trying to draw you in, trying to bring you into this, and wrestle with this with me. We need to be honest with the text. It does say Sabbaths, and it says, "No one is to judge you." But, this text does not exist apart from the rest of the Bible, and we must compare Scripture with Scripture. And what I want to show you is that six times in the Word of God, these exact terms are used together. The exact terms are used together, and in every other case, they refer to the full number of religious days of obligation for Israel. Now, here's my argument, I'll give it to you upfront. Paul is speaking here about the absolute abolition of every day of religious obligation that was placed upon the Israelites. There are no longer any binding commandments to observe these days. Now, in the first century, and I would argue perhaps even today, those of Jewish heritage could observe these. I've been in Israel, I've been in a reformed Christian church in Israel, where they continue to observe these days as part of their culture, not as an obligation, but as part of their culture, they observe them. I don't have a problem with that. But Paul here is not speaking of the first day of the week at all, rather, he is speaking of every characteristically Jewish day. Now, once again, as I said this morning, I don't want you to believe that, just because I'm telling you. I want to show you from Scripture. This is not merely an assertion on my part, but it is a result of the study of Scriptures. And really, I owe this to a footnote in Lightfoot's commentary on Colossians. He just footnotes this very briefly, and it sent me off to think through it, and look at all these texts. So you ready? We're gonna go into the Old Testament, we're gonna see some interesting things. Turn with me, how often do you get to say, "Turn with me to 1 Chronicles," right? Not very often. Now, this, David is preparing for the worship of God, and ultimately, for the building of the temple. He's bringing things together, and in, beginning in verse 24, he's, the chronicler is telling us about the sons of Levi, and what they'll be doing. The Levites had the responsibility of being part of the worship that would come ultimately to the temple. Pick it up in verse 29. "Their duty was also to assist with the shew-bread, the flour of the grain offering, the wafers of unleavened bread, the baked offering, the offering mixed with oil, and all measures of quantity or size." All right? So you can see that this is talking about the Old Testament worship. At this point, when David is king, it's the tabernacle, but ultimately, it will be the temple. But all of these things have to do with the requirements of worship in the tabernacle or temple. Verse 30. "And they were to stand every morning, thanking and praising the Lord, and likewise at evening..." So they're worshiping God at the beginning and the end of the daylight period, as we would know it. "...and whenever burnt offerings were offered to the Lord on Sabbaths," plural, "new moons, and feast days, according to the number required of them regularly before the Lord." Now, here, we have these three terms, which obviously are originally in the Hebrew language, translated into Greek and in the Septuagint, the same, the very same terms that Paul uses in Colossians, Chapter 2. And they are used together, and they clearly designate all of the commanded days given to Israel by the Lord. And there's something that we have to remember, there were Sabbaths other than the seventh day. Saturday, as we might call it, is not the only Sabbath day for the Jews. If we were to turn to Leviticus 23, you might write that in your notes, you'll see that there are other days associated with the feasts of Israel, that were designated to be observed as Sabbaths, regardless of when they fell during the week. Didn't matter which day of the week they fell upon, if they were days associated with these festivals, they were to be observed as a Sabbath. And that's why the word is plural, because it includes every Saturday, the weekly Sabbath, but it also includes every other Sabbath day, the Passover, the first day of the seventh month, which was the Feast of Trumpets, the Day of Atonement, the first and the eighth day of the Feast of Tabernacles. All of these were also Sabbaths. And like I said, it didn't matter which day of the week they fell on, if it was on a Tuesday, it was a Sabbath. If it fell on a Thursday, it was a Sabbath. Pardon me. Now, in this case, 1 Chronicles 23:31 views the days as a package. The Levites were responsible to lead in worship on all of these days that were commanded by God in the law, all right? It's a package. Everything that He has commanded, every day that you're to observe, this is what you're to do. 2 Chronicles, we get to go to Chronicles again. 2 Chronicles, Chapter 2. "Now Solomon purposed to build a temple for the name of the Lord, and a royal palace for himself. Solomon assigned seventy thousand men to bear burdens, and eighty thousand to quarry in the hill country, and thirty-six hundred to oversee them. Solomon sent word to Hiram, the king of Tyre, 'As you dealt with David, my father, and sent him cedar to build himself a house to dwell, and so deal with me. Behold, I am about to build a house for the name of the Lord, my God, and dedicate it to him for the burning of incense, of sweet spices before him, and for the regular arrangement of the shew-bread, and for burnt offerings, morning and evening, on the Sabbaths, and the new moons, and the appointed feasts of the Lord, our God, as ordained forever for Israel.'" Now here, Solomon is writing to Hiram, the king of Tyre, in order to begin the process of accumulating goods that are necessary for him to build the temple in Jerusalem. And again, he mentions the same three terms, the Sabbaths, the New Moons, and the Festivals, together. This is a package of every day associated with the Jewish obligation of keeping time, right? You see it again? See, it's there? He puts them all together and say, "These are all of the days that we are obliged to keep." Towards the end of the Book of 2 Chronicles, 2 Chronicles 31:3. I want you to see these things, I hope this isn't tedious, but I want you to see them with your own eyes, because there's an important point to make. "When all this was finished, all Israel who were present went out to the cities of Judah, and broke in pieces the pillars, and cut down the Asherim, and broke down the high places and the altars throughout all Judah, and Benjammit, and Ephraim, and Manasseh, until they had destroyed them all. Then all the people of Israel returned to their cities, every man to his possession. And Hezekiah appointed the divisions of the priests and of the Levites, division by division, each according to his service, the priests and the Levites, for burnt offerings and peace offerings, to minister in the gates of the camp of the Lord, to give thanks and praise." Have you noticed that in all three of these texts, the offerings have come up as well? But look at verse 3. "The contribution of the king, from his own possessions, was for the burnt offerings, the burnt offerings of morning and evening, and the burnt offerings for the Sabbaths, the new moons, and the appointed feasts." Once again, we have a package. We have these three terms all placed together as one, referring to the fullness of the days of obligation that belonged to Israel. Isaiah, Chapter 1. The Scripture says, "Let all things be established at the mouth of two or three witnesses." But I want to show you six witnesses, and I have a very specific purpose for that. Isaiah, Chapter 1, verses 13 and 14. Now, the prophet is speaking. "When you come to appear before me, who has required of you this trampling of my courts? Bring no more vain offerings; incense is an abomination to me. New moon, and Sabbath, and the calling of convocations, I cannot endure iniquity and solemn assembly. Your new moons and your appointed feasts, my soul hates; they have become a burden to me; I am weary of bearing them." Incense, once again, we see an offering in the morning and in the evening of each day, but then the Lord speaks against these days, and once more, all of them are mentioned, the Sabbaths, the New Moons, and the Festival Days, or how does the ESV translate it here? The calling of convocations, appointed feasts, they're all mentioned together. And, I mean, this is strong language, isn't it? The Lord says He hates them. He appointed them, but He hates them. Why? Because the people come with cold hearts. They put in their appearance, but their appearance is for the sake of the other people, not for the sake of worshiping God. And He says He hates them. That's strong language, but you can see, it's all there. Hosea. Hosea. I always have to go through this, Ezekiel, Daniel, Hosea, first of the 12 minor prophets. I have to run through the 12, especially when you get to some of the latter ones. Where is Zechariah? Oh yeah, there it is, okay. Hosea, Chapter 2. Let's pick it up, well, I guess we can just read verse 11, we've already seen the context of the others. "I will put an end to all her mirth, her feasts, her new moons, her Sabbaths, and all her appointed feasts, and I will lay waste her vines and her fig trees, of which she said, 'These are my wages,' etc." All of her appointed feasts. It's again, once more, a package deal. Ezekiel 45:17. "It shall be the prince's duty to furnish the burnt offerings, grain offerings, and drink offerings, at the feasts, the new moons, and the Sabbaths, all the appointed feasts of the house of Israel. He shall provide the sin offerings, grain offerings, burnt offerings, and peace offerings, to make atonement on behalf of the house of Israel." Same thing. That's six witnesses, six times in the Old Testament, and in every case, when these words appear together, they refer to the fullness of time-related observances commanded to Israel. Now, there are some things that we need to say, and this is why I ask you to look at each of these with me. I believe that apart from our Lord Jesus Christ, the Apostle Paul was the best interpreter of the Old Testament that has ever lived. You know, trivia question, can anybody tell me what seminary Paul went to? Gamaliel, very good, yes! He says that he sat at the feet of Gamaliel. Now, Gamaliel's rabbinical school in Jerusalem was considered to be sort of the Harvard of rabbinical schools, it was the top place. And Saul went there, and he graduated from it, apparently, because he was using that as a means to connect with the Jews when that riot was erupting in Acts, Chapter 22. "I sat at the feet of Gamaliel." Gamaliel appears twice in the Book of Acts, both times he appears positively. Well anyways, Paul had a great education, and the Lord used that to prepare him for the time when he came to Christ. His mind was full of the Old Testament, he was just missing the Lord Jesus. And when he met Jesus on the road to Damascus, everything changed, and all of a sudden, Paul was able to understand what he had been taught before, now in light of the person and work of Jesus Christ. So, the best interpreter... So the best interpreter of the Old Testament. I would say that in Colossians 2:16, when these words are placed together, knowing that the Apostle Paul was thoroughly trained in the theology of the Old Testament, not just generally, but he knew it technically. It wasn't just a more or less a good idea of what it's about. He was familiar with all of its intricacies and technicalities. When I see him putting together in this place these exact terms, as they are always used when they appear together in the Old Testament, I give Paul enough credit to recognize that he uses the words in exactly the same way as they are used everywhere else in inspired scripture. In fact, I'm bold enough to say this. You need to prove to me that he uses them in a different way. It's your responsibility. If you disagree, you need to show good reason why they're used differently than they are every other time they appear together in scripture. The argument is very strong to say Paul uses them the same way that they're used every other time in the Old Testament. There is no argument that says, yeah, but Paul meant such and such. No, 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 no. I won't accept that. I won't buy it. Paul uses them in the way that they're used everywhere else. They're a package in all of the other places. And so every rule of exegesis supports the view that they are likewise a package here. So come back with me to Colossians 2. We can say with Paul, in the strongest of terms, let no one pass judgment on you in questions of food and drink, or with regard to a festival, or a new moon, or Sabbaths. Remember, I asked you to put the yes there, because it belongs there. Every Jewish day, every festival, every new moon, all of the Sabbaths, every day that is associated with the Old Covenant is gone. And you and I have no obligation to keep festivals, new moons, or Sabbaths. And we should never let anyone judge us because we don't observe the Day of Atonement, or the Passover, or the Feast of Tabernacles, or the Seventh Day Sabbath. They're gone. The substance is Christ. He has come, and we enter into the fullness of his coming. Thus, so when we look at Colossians 2:16 in the light of the analogy of scripture, what scripture says everywhere else, and we see that the technical, exact language used elsewhere to describe a package of Old Testament days that seems to eliminate the problem. Paul is not talking about the absolute end of keeping any day. That would go too far. That's not what he says. Paul is talking about the abrogation of all Jewish days, the Gentiles. And even Jewish Christians were under absolutely no obligation to observe them. So we can look at these and say, yes, I'm with Paul. I won't let anybody judge me. We recently had the Day of Atonement, didn't we, a couple of weeks ago? I remember seeing it on the news, the evening news. Tomorrow will be the Jewish High Holy Day, the Day of Atonement. I went about my business doing whatever it was I was doing that day, I don't happen to remember right now, without a second thought. Because I'm free. I had no obligation to observe the Day of Atonement. That's what Paul's talking about. When a Jew, remember, Paul, before he came to Christ, was a Jew who was zealous for the law. When a Jew is able to say this, and when he's able to speak to his fellow professing Jews to tell them that they must not judge a Gentile believer because to do so is out of bounds, the body is Christ, we can agree with Paul. And we can say, we keep the first day of the week according to the pattern of New Testament Christians. Because that's what we see in the New Testament. There was the resurrection day, the first day of the week. The next appearance that's recorded for us of the Lord Jesus is on the next Sunday, if I can use that term, when he appeared to Thomas. It was eight days later. It was a Sunday. Pentecost in that year was the first day of the week. Pentecost happened to fall on a Sunday when the disciples were gathered together in the upper room, and the Spirit came down upon them on that day. It's no mistake or accident that it happened to happen on the day when they were gathered together in order to be in Christian worship. In Acts 20, verse seven, we're told that the Christians in Troas joined together on the first day of the week in order to observe the Lord's Supper. And it's interesting that Luke uses what sometimes is called a customary infinitive there, meaning he uses a grammatical form that says, this was their custom each week. They met on the first day of the week in order to break bread. 1 Corinthians 16:2. It's the Lord's Day when we gather together and we give our offerings up to him. And then in Revelation 1:10, we have that word, that phrase. John says, I was in the Spirit on the Lord's Day, right? It's really interesting, the adjective that he uses there is a unique word. Well, it's not unique in the New Testament. It appears twice. Unique would mean only once. It appears twice. The Lord's Day, the other time it's used, is the Lord's Supper. In both cases, something that specifically belongs to him, that which is identified with the Lord. So the day is the day, it's not the day of the Lord, but rather the day that belongs to the Lord, the Lord's Day. And so this commandment is just as important for our sanctification as any other commandment. We are to keep the first day, the day that memorializes the body, the day that memorializes the new creation and the new Exodus, the resurrection of our Lord Jesus Christ. We celebrate together what he has done. We don't keep the Seventh Day. We don't keep the other Jewish days. You know, our Puritans' fathers would also have said, we don't keep things like Easter and Christmas as holy days of obligation, because the New Testament doesn't tell us to keep those days. Now, I suppose if you came to my house, you'd see a Christmas tree and all the lights and all that stuff. We love it. But we don't do that because it's a day of obligation to honor the Lord. It's because that's the custom that we have. If this year, we happen to be going away for Christmas, so I've already told my wife and my daughter, no Christmas tree this year. I'm not going to spend eighty-five dollars and not be home to enjoy it. Okay, so we don't have any obligation for those days. But we do have an obligation each week for the first day of the week. Now, the other two texts that sometimes are mentioned are Galatians 4:10. You observe days and months and seasons and years. I'm afraid that I have labored over you in vain. The very same argument can be used and applied here to Galatians 4:10. Once again, Paul's speaking about the package of Jewish days. And Romans 14:6 is the other text that sometimes is used to say, wait a minute, Paul says that we are not to observe a day. Because in Romans 14:6, well, 5. One person esteems one day is better than another, while another esteems all days alike. Each one should be fully convinced in his own mind. The one who observes the day observes it in honor of the Lord. The one who eats eats in honor of the Lord, since he gives thanks to God. While the one who abstains abstains in honor of the Lord and gives thanks to him, etc. In the context, if we were to continue reading, Paul speaks about ritual words, like unclean and pure. And in the next chapter, he speaks about Jew and Gentile. It's the same type of thing. There are Jews in the Roman Church. If they want to, they may continue to observe the Jewish days, but there's no obligation to do so. And there certainly is no expectation that Gentiles likewise have to give themselves up to obedience to those days. And so I hope that you can say that I've been honest with the text of scripture. My approach to interpreting passages like this is to ask the question, how do they fit into what the whole of the Bible teaches us? Not simply looking at them individually, but what does the rest of scripture say in its response to that particular text? And that's how I read Colossians 2, Galatians 4, and Romans 14. That they all speak to us about the end of the obligation of a long series of days that were given over to the Jews. All right. Where do we go from here? Well, like I said before, I have much more material than I have time for. Maybe 6:30 wasn't a very bad estimate after all. Why do we keep the Lord's Day holy? Let me suggest to you several reasons. First, because it's a commandment. It's one of the ten. Would we break any of the other commandments? Well, it's obvious that we would not. And that's just the surface reading. But someone objects. You don't observe the Seventh Day Sabbath as commanded in Exodus 20 and Deuteronomy 5. You observe the first day of the week. Why is this? And why, and doesn't Paul say that Sabbaths are only a shadow of the reality in Christ in our past? Well, what do we say? Well, there are several things that we can say. Look with me at Isaiah, chapter 56. The prophets, under the inspiration of the Holy Spirit, looked forward, and they spoke of the Sabbath in this gospel age. It's one of the terms I like to use for the period between Christ's ascension into heaven and his return. We live in the gospel age. That's when we are. That's right now. And so what does the prophet Isaiah say? Thus says the Lord. Keep justice and do righteousness, for soon my salvation will come, and my righteousness be revealed. Blessed is the man who does this, and the son of man who holds it fast, who keeps the Sabbath, not profaning it, and keeps his hand from doing any evil. Let not the foreigner who has joined himself to the Lord say, the Lord will surely separate me from his people. And let not the eunuch say, behold, I'm a dry tree. For thus says the Lord, to the eunuchs who keep my Sabbaths, who choose the things that please me and hold fast my covenant, I will give in my house and within my walls a monument and a name better than sons and daughters. I will give them an everlasting name that shall not be cut off. And the foreigners who join themselves to the Lord to minister to him, to love the name of the Lord, and to be his servants, everyone who keeps the Sabbath and does not profane it, and holds fast my covenant, these I will bring to my holy mountain and make them joyful in my house of prayer. Their burnt offerings and their sacrifices will be accepted on my altar. For my people, for my house shall be called the house of prayer for all peoples. The Lord God, who gathers the outcasts of Israel, declares, I will gather yet others to him besides those already gathered. Now, this is interesting. One of the reasons that it's interesting is that there were certain people who were excluded from the worship of God under the Mosaic Covenant. Do you remember who they were? Foreigners, right? We know that the temple in Jerusalem was structured in such a way where there was a court of the Gentiles. And if the Gentiles violated that and went into the court of the women, and then ultimately the court of the men, and even further into the temple precincts, there were real problems. In fact, in some cases, you might be subject to the death penalty because you were a Gentile who went into places in the temple that you couldn't be taken. And that was the reason why there was a riot in Acts, chapter 22. Because these Jews who were opposed to the gospel were accusing Paul of bringing a Gentile into the temple in places that he couldn't go. And a riot erupted. You know, when I read Acts 21 and 22, I try to read it with all of the noise and the emotion that would have been present among these people. We read black words on a white page, and they don't convey to us the circumstances of what a riot would have been like. The redness on people's faces, the sweat that would have been pouring down, and all of the loud voices, the melee that took place, and Paul's in the middle of it. It all happened because they accused him of bringing a Gentile into the temple. Well, another group that were forbidden from coming into the temple and worshiping God were the eunuchs. They weren't allowed to come. And yet we read in this text that both the eunuchs and the Gentiles will be welcomed because the house of God will be a house of prayer. Not a building in Jerusalem any longer, but now the house, you're the house of God here in Abilene. Not that you're the only house of God in Abilene. But this is the house of God, not the building, but the people. You are the house of God. And it doesn't matter if you're a eunuch. It doesn't matter if you're a Gentile. In fact, I would guess probably most of us are Gentiles, right? I mean, my ancestors are all from Northern Europe, Sweden and Ireland. Painted their faces blue, they danced around bonfires, they killed each other and ate each other. That's my ancestors. No DNA or blood of Abraham coursing through my veins. And yet God accepts me as a Gentile to worship him. What a great privilege that is. And that's a fulfillment of what the prophet Isaiah is writing about here. We keep this because it is prophesied, because it's a commandment of the Lord. We've already looked at Hebrews, chapter four, so I won't take you there right now. Another reason why we keep the Lord's Day holy is because it is the Lord's. See, it's his possession. It's not ours. We need to treat it appropriately because it's his. In Mark 2:28, Jesus says that he is the Lord of the Sabbath. In Revelation 1:10, the early church, Apostle John, treated that day as if it belonged to the Lord. He calls it that. It's the day in which preeminently he demonstrates to us his glory and his majesty. It's the day that belongs to a great king and takes on his character. So when we observe this day, when we reverence it, when we take it seriously, we express our love for the Lord Jesus Christ. We acknowledge and proclaim, first to him and secondly to others, that we love him and desire to honor him with our devotion and with our time. But when we violate the day, we treat his resurrection as an unimportant thing. We state loudly by our actions that we're not so concerned with his glory and his majesty. And of course, of course, we have to say that our Lord Jesus Christ is a great and majestic king. And there will come a day when every knee will bow and every tongue will confess that he is Lord to the glory of God the Father. But brothers and sisters, we have the privilege now, this day, of doing that thing. It's in anticipation of the day, the great day, when every knee will bow and every tongue will confess. But we have the privilege of doing it here in this place on this day. And it was very moving to sit there in the front row and sing along with you the hymns of praise to God this morning. I was thinking about how great it is to praise the Lord in song with his people as we join together. The Lord's Day ought to be treated for what it is. It's his day. It's a day that he claims to be his own. And so we want to serve him and honor him in the way that we keep this day. Another reason that we keep this day holy, as we saw this morning, is because it is a fitting memorial of the pictures of our redemption, of creation, the new creation, and of the new Exodus, as they are brought together for the Lord. A fourth reason why we keep the Lord's Day holy is because it is the day of greatest benefit to the soul. On all of the other days of the week, we are legitimately distracted by the concerns of life. You go to work, you do your job, in fact, you do it unto the Lord, but you pay attention to what's going on in front of you. If it's a machine shop, if you're driving a truck, if it's in front of a computer, whatever it is that you're doing, you're doing it unto the Lord, but you're paying attention to that thing. And it's right for you to do that. You put bread on the table, you maintain your possessions, you tend to the business of life. That's good. All of these things, though, in a sense, detract us from the Lord because we can't think of him. We can't concentrate on the glory of God while writing a report for the manager, operating machine, visiting a customer to make a sale. We can't concentrate on the glory of God while mowing the lawn or attending a baseball game or trying to decide which is the best roast in the display at the grocery store. Can't do that. But on the Lord's Day, when we put those things aside, we can devote ourselves to him without distraction. And brothers and sisters, this is especially true of public worship. Because it's here, in this place, in this room, where regularly you meet. And if God and his providence sends you to another place because of some circumstance, if you had been in California last year in April, you would have had to meet outside. But my son is a pastor in Los Angeles County, and his church had to meet outside for a long period of time. They set up tents and they did all the rest, but they had to meet outside. It didn't matter that they weren't inside what we might call the sanctuary, or that they met outside. That was the church coming together to worship the Lord. And they were able, in a special way, to devote themselves to the Lord in that circumstance. You can't duplicate it anywhere else. You can't duplicate it in personal devotions. You can't duplicate it in family worship, though it's good to do those things. You can't do it by communing with God on the mountaintop or at the seashore. The Bible tells us that God is known among his people. It's when his people gather together here in this place. Look with me at Hebrews, chapter 10. Let's go back to the book of Hebrews. The longest doctrinal section in the book of Hebrews begins towards the end of chapter six, and it continues all the way up through verse 18 of chapter 10. And it's about Christ, the high priest, who offers himself to satisfy the demands of God. He's the greatest of all high priests. He does all that we need. Verse 19 begins the application. Therefore, brothers, since we have confidence to enter the holy places by the blood of Jesus, by the new and living way that He has opened for us through the curtain, that is through His flesh, and since we have a great high, great priest over the house of God, let us draw near with a true heart, in full assurance of faith, with our hearts sprinkled clean from an evil conscience, and our bodies washed with pure water. Let us hold fast the confession of our hope without wavering, for he who promises faithful, let us continue how to stir up one another to love and good deeds. Now you notice, after the summary of the doctrine that he's just laid out, and it's in verses 19, 20, and 21, there are three "let us", not lettuce, but let us passages. Passages in which he gives a command but includes Himself. Let us draw near, let us hold fast, let us consider. You see those three things? Those are the three things that are to be done. Where do you do it? Verse 25 tells us. Not neglecting to meet together or assemble together, as is the habit of some, but encouraging one another, and all the more as you see the day drawing near. The preacher to the Hebrews had a church-centered piety. And he recognized that the church, when the church gathers together, is the place where these things are to happen, where we are able to draw near to God in worship, where we hold fast the confession of our faith, where we consider each other, and how to draw out or strengthen love and good works with each other. In the Bible, where is God's presence especially known? You know where it is? It's in the midst of His people. Psalms 16:11, 76:1, 87:1-3, 99:1-3, 102:13-17, Hebrews 2:10-13, 12:18-29. Over and over again, it's when God's people meet together that God comes and meets with them. So we keep this day in order that we might enjoy the means of grace and come to enjoy the Lord as we meet together with His people. Well, one, I guess one more question I was asked at lunch. I think it's one of the best questions. Let me anticipate that you will ask this question and maybe give you a little bit of an answer before you ask it, and then we'll open up for some questions. What do we do? How do we keep the day holy? That's the most practical question, isn't it? How do we do it? Well, let me suggest to you that there are three things that you ought to do. And if you do these things, you probably don't have enough time to think about other things and wonder, should I or shouldn't I? I, I don't have a list. I refuse to give a list and say, yes, this, no, that. I, I, I won't do it. If you ask me, I'm gonna tell you, you have to figure it out yourself. Sorry. Here are the three things. Worship. That ought to be obvious. The first day of the week is the day of worship. It's a day when we come together and we honor the Lord. We do this in public. We gather together with God's people. We do it as families. We do it in private. On, on, you know, I had a two and a half hour drive over here this morning. How, how do you, what do you do to help that be worshipful? Well, I have a playlist on my phone. Believe it or not, even though I'm in my mid-sixties, I know how to use YouTube Music app. I have a playlist on my phone that I only use on the Lord's Day. It's called Hymns and Psalms. And for two and a half hours, as I drove over here this morning, I had familiar, sometimes unfamiliar, psalms and hymns playing in the car to try to prepare me for coming to be with you. That, it seemed to me that that was the best way that I could use my time on the Lord's Day while I'm driving to be able to sanctify the day. And that was, that was a little bit of worship, because some of those songs really moved me as I was driving along and thinking about how wonderful it is to worship God, just listening to that music. Then we came together. And as, one of the things I really like about sitting up front, by the way, this is one of the benefits that you get. When you sit in the back, please forgive me, I'm not picking on anybody who happens to be sitting in the back. There are good reasons to sit in the back. Let me put it this way. When you sit up front, you get to hear the volume of everybody singing. And that's really a wonderful thing. I, I love to have all of the sounds of the voices of God's people washing over me as I stand at the front and listen to, you know, stand like I did over there and listen to people worshiping. It's great. So we worship on the Lord's Day. Second thing that's also obvious is we rest. Yeah, the writer to the Hebrews or the Hebrews preacher might change the, the word from catapausis to sabatismas, but that doesn't mean that we don't rest. And it is good to rest from other responsibilities, to go take a nap or go for a walk or go for a ride, but rest from what you do. Now, I said that I don't have a list. I'll give, I do have a list sometimes. I'll give you one list. I tell my students, don't study on the Lord's Day. Take it off. Study the other six days of the week. Generally speaking, we don't have classes on Monday. Part of the reason for that is so that we don't intrude on the Lord's Day, so that our students can have a full day off. And I know that sometimes they do. They're tempted because they have to do some reading or they have to get a paper done. But I try to tell them, don't do that. That's your work. Don't do it on that day. Rest. Go take a nap. The third category in Matthew 12:9 and 12, or 9 through 12, is to do what Jesus says and do works of charity and necessity. Works of charity and necessity. God and His providence causes certain events to occur which confront us with situations that require work or labor but do not violate the commandment. If the ox falls in the ditch, do you leave the ox there until the next day? No, you take him out. So works of charity and necessity are good. People are ill and need to be treated and cared for. Things break and need to be fixed. One time, we had a problem with our water pipes and we began to get a leak. We had to do something about it. You might get a flat tire on that day. Change your tire. You don't violate the day. These are works of necessity and they do not violate the command. Works of charity, it's lawful to do good on the Sabbath. We see the Lord Jesus, for example, healing a, a man's hand. And the Pharisees accuse him of sinning, but he defends the principle. So we ought to ask the question on the Lord's Day, what can and ought we to do to help, to assist, to do good to others on this day? We might ask, what are their greatest needs and how can we meet them? If we have unconverted friends, maybe we invite them to worship. And then invite them to a meal at your house. Spend time with them and talk to them about what you heard at worship and what you did. And use that as a friendly opportunity to speak to them about Christ. If there's someone that you know that is lonely, go and spend time with that person. Visit those people. Go to the hospital, go to the, the nursing homes, go to, go to people that you know who just are alone. And spend some time with them. And if you know someone who's disconsolate, go and seek to give encouragement to that person. But look around. Don't, don't let the Lord's Day be a day of inaction. Let it be a day of good works, of good action. Consider the opportunities. Because you know, if we stop and think about it, the needs are really very great. And there is much to do. And God has given us this day upon which we may do it. So we shouldn't look at the Lord's Day as a day of ease and sloth and inactivity, but rather look at it as a day of holy activity that we do to the glory of God and for the good of the souls of men and women. I hope that that's helpful. It may be. Now, I know that you want to ask the question, can I go to a restaurant? Can I play golf? Can I do this or that? I'm not saying. Sorry. All right. Any, any, let's, let's have some questions and answers. Well, attempts at answers, but be glad to at least hear some questions from you if you have any. I, I, there is so much more to say that we can't do. Brother? Colossians 3? What specifically in Colossians 3? Yeah, good. Very good. Yes. That's a, that's a really good insight, and thanks for making that. Because what, what that tells us is the Lord's Day is, gives us a special opportunity in which we're able to do this that perhaps we can't do on other days, because we have legitimate, I'm calling them distractions, but they're not really distractions, are they? They're, they're the tasks that God gives to us. But on the Lord's Day, we can do this in a special way. And it, it, it builds up our souls to be able to do this. The older I get, the more that I realize, in fact, this, this came into my mind this morning. I have one less day to live on this earth. The weeks seem to be flying by in my life. You know, they, I can't believe how quickly they go. And I know that soon I'll be in Christ's presence. I've had several of my friends already go to be with Him. And I anticipate that that day will be coming for me. Well, this life on earth is a preparation for the, the life to come. That's really what it's about. It's not about building up a big bank account and being comfortable and doing all those things that the prosperity liars tell you. That's, that's what they are. They're lying. It's not about that. It's about preparing your soul for eternity. You know, probably 50 years ago and more, in pastoral counseling classes, pastors, ministers were taught, when they went into a hospital room, to say to people, are you prepared to meet God? Nowadays, in most schools, they will never, ever encourage you to say that. Because you'll, you'll make that person afraid. You'll make that person feel bad. But really, that's what we need to say to people who are on their hospital beds. Are you prepared to meet God? And you know what? You. I, I, I need to ask that question of you. Are you prepared to meet God? Because what you do in this life prepares you for that moment that will inevitably come to every single one of us. You cannot escape from it. There's no way around it. It will happen. Trust in Christ, you are prepared. Neglect Christ, the consequences are eternally horrible, the worst possible consequence you could ever imagine. So the Lord's Day allows us, in a special sense, to prepare our souls for where we will live forever and ever. Thank you, brother. That, that was very helpful. Anybody else? I'm pleased that no one fell asleep so far. We were joking beforehand that that could be the case. But so far, you're doing well. Anything else? Yes, sir? Could you speak up just a little bit, please? Yeah, well, that, that's a good question that has to do really with how the Old Testament relates to the New Testament. Because we, we have the same kind of language, for example, used about circumcision and the blessings that come to children who are circumcised because they're Israelites. But all of those things, even that language was intended to point to the reality of, of Christ and what would happen when Christ would come. And so, what, you know, one of the forgotten disciplines of Christian theology is making distinctions and recognizing that all, not all statements are universal statements, but those state, there may be universal language that helps us to understand a principle that is limited in scope. Christ died for all men. Well, the all men are actually the elect. They're not every human being who's ever lived, man and woman of all time. Okay? So the, the language of to all generations, to a thousand generations, that kind of language in the Old Testament is intended to give to us a sense that God is faithful to every promise that He makes forever and forever. But even embedded within the Old Testament, like that passage that we saw in Isaiah 53, you have the prophecy of a change that's going to come, where the Gentiles and the eunuchs, who are eternally forbidden from coming into the presence of God in the temple in Jerusalem, will one day be welcomed into His presence. So, so you have to recognize that that language points us to God's faithfulness and His promise, but it's not intended to be taken literally. Does that help? Yeah, okay. That's a, that's a really good question, though. Seventh-day Adventists worship on Saturday, yes. Right. Yes. And, and a lot of evangelical churches rent their buildings on Sunday, which is a handy thing. But yes, they worship on, on Saturday, which we would look at that and say, that's not what the scripture teaches, you know? In Colossians 2:17 clearly says not on, not on Saturday. Nehemiah 13:15. "In those days I saw in Judah people treading wine presses on the Sabbath and bringing heaps of grain and loading them on donkeys, and also wine grapes, figs, and all kinds of loads, which they brought into Jerusalem on the Sabbath day, and I warned them on the day when they sold food, etc." And so you're asking, how are we to understand this objection that Nehemiah has to what's going on in Jerusalem at the time? How does it, how does it help us to think through our obligations of the day? Right, right. Going to the market and buying from foreigners. Like I said, I really don't like to set up lists, okay? I'll tell you what we do and leave it at that for each individual to make a decision, okay? I don't go to the market on the Lord's Day. It just is a matter of principle. If I need something, I try to figure it out on Saturday and go on Saturday, so that I don't do that. And part of the reason for that, in my thinking, is if I go to the market, then I am complicit in the person who is breaking the Sabbath by working on that day. I know that they're working. I, my absence from the market is not going to change the fact that they're working. But if I go, in some ways, I'm contributing to their working. It's one of the reasons I, I think Chick-fil-A has one of the best business plans in the world. Good, good for Chick-fil-A that they don't open on Sundays. And you know what the number one fast food restaurant in the United States is? It's Chick-fil-A. And they only sell on six days in the week, and yet they're number one. I think the Lord has blessed that decision that Truett Cathy made as a Christian man years ago. So that's, that's my personal opinion, okay? If somebody else were to go to the market, it's, I'm, they have to do that with a clear conscience before the Lord, and I won't judge them for that. I, I'm fudging a little bit. I know that. Is that okay, though? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Either, either I answered every question or I confused everybody so totally that they don't even know how to frame questions. Probably the latter rather than the former. So what do you want to do, Jason? Can I, we said 3:30. Still 20 minutes. Well, yeah, I, you know, I think that that's in the background of Hebrews 4. What, my interpretation to you this morning was to say, that's typically, I didn't say this, but that's typically how most evangelicals view it who don't have a Lord's Day. I want to say, that may be in the background, but what we need to bring forward is that the Lord's Day speaks to us about the new creation and the new Exodus. But certainly, even rest in Canaan is a picture of the rest of eternal life that we receive from Christ. So yes, absolutely, there are multiple pictures that are present in the Fourth Commandment. Yeah. Again, we want to make clear distinctions and not absent something because we bring something else forward. And that's all I was trying to do, is bring those things forward, because they're about Christ. Jason? I, to be honest with you, I don't understand the question. I, to be honest with you, I don't understand the question.
So, we were talking before about how New Covenant theology, New Covenant theologians kind of, they'll say, nine of the ten commandments are still active. Here's one. This one has been done away with. Can you give any insight into how that developed or why they made that argument or story and where that comes from?
Okay, yeah.
I was asking you a question that's kind of outside your scope.
Yeah, it is. In the 1970s, there were some men, one was named John Zens, another was named Norbert Ward, and there were others who began to question, because they were rejecting the practice of infant baptism, they began to question whether or not other things that they saw in the Old Testament were brought over into the New. And they didn't see a command in the New Testament. They believed that there's no moral law, that we are subject to the commands of the New Testament, and unless a commandment of the Old Testament is repeated in the New, we're not under any obligation to obey it. And they would have read Hebrews 4 differently to the way that I opened it up this morning. So they would argue that the other nine commandments are repeated in one form or another in the New Testament, but the Fourth Commandment is not, therefore, it's not in play. Now, there's a lot more to the argument than that. But that began in the 1970s. There was a journal that came out four times a year called Baptist Reformation Review. I was a subscriber back then, and that's where the idea began to develop and move forward from that journal. John Zens wrote an article called, "Is There a Covenant of Grace?", and he denied that there was a covenant of grace, and in many ways, that was the beginning of the whole New Covenant theology movement. Now, it's developed in 1975, '4, I don't remember the exact year, but that's a long time ago now, and there's a lot of water that's gone under the bridge, and there are many trajectories that New Covenant theology has followed. They don't all agree with each other at this point, interestingly enough. But that's really the modern beginning of it. It's something that's new. I've argued somewhere, I don't remember where, in print, though, that one of the things that we ought to step back and think about New Covenant theology is that it is, it doesn't have any historical footsteps. You can't look back into the history of the Church and say, these people believe the same thing that's being presented by whichever group of New Covenant theology today. There just isn't any. The closest possible is the 19th-century Gospel Standard Strict Baptists in England, who, in a sense, rejected the continuing obligation of the moral law. But the Gospel Standard Strict Baptists, Gospel Standard referred to not the Gospel as the standard of life, but rather a magazine. That's how they identified themselves. You had the Earthen Vessel Strict Baptists and the Gospel Standard Strict Baptists. Earthen Vessel, one magazine, Gospel Standard, another one, and so you identify with one or the other. And the Gospel Standard guys, they still exist. They had a view that's similar to New Covenant theology, but even that would have been a novelty that came from some of their leaders in the middle of the 19th century. So, and it's not the same, but it's similar, at least. But there's nothing before that. Throughout the history of the Church, it's always been the case that the moral law continued to be enforced. Let me show you one text that I think is really important. I was just gonna go there, but your question leads me to it. Turn with me to 1 Corinthians 7. Now, I did this at a founder's conference a couple of years ago, and they had pew bibles. And I said, okay, I want you to take out your bibles, but don't take out your pew bibles, because the pew bibles were ESVs, and the ESV gets this verse, well, let me put it this way. Couple of years ago, since I moved to Texas, I had cataract surgery, okay? One of the best things I've ever done, because I can see you all now. Sometimes I don't even need these things, cheaters, you know, to read. But I had cataract surgery. What I realized, especially at night, driving was really difficult, because I had these occlusions on my eyes. They were cloudy, and I couldn't see well. Now, what I could see was true, but I couldn't see it clearly, because I had these shadows on my eyes. They took them out. Man, it was fantastic. Like I said, one of the greatest decisions. I think that the ESV translation has a cataract over it, because it's a true translation, okay, but it hides some of the subtleties of what Paul says. Here it is in front of me. 1 Corinthians 7:19, "For neither circumcision counts for anything nor uncircumcision but keeping the commandments of God." Literally, Paul says this, circumcision is nothing, and uncircumcision is nothing but keeping the commandments of God. That's what it says. That's an exact, literal translation. Circumcision is nothing, and, it's a chi, circumcision is nothing, and uncircumcision is nothing. Then the next one that he uses, the next and is a different word, and it's what we call a strong adversative. It sends you in a different direction. It's Allah. Circumcision is nothing, uncircumcision is nothing, but, and, but, keeping the commandments of God. And that's where he stops. We have to fill in the rest of it. Now, think about the parallel. Circumcision is nothing, uncircumcision is nothing, but keeping the commandments of God. What do we fill in? What's parallel? Is everything, okay? It's everything. That's what you have to fill in. ESV, they don't fill it in at all, and they make it so that you don't notice the parallel. Now, was circumcision a commandment of God? Okay? Yeah? You agree? You're gonna agree with me? It was a commandment of God, right? What happened to a Jewish man if he didn't circumcise his baby? His male baby? He'd be thrown out, right? He's outside the camp, okay? That's a commandment of God, and yet Paul contrasts it with the commandments of God. Now, this is really interesting. What he does here is he makes a distinction between two kinds of law. Here's my distinction thing, okay? The distinction is between what we call positive law and moral law, okay? Positive law is a law that is only in force and requires special revelation to know it. Anybody? Trivia question, Bible trivia. How old was Abraham, Abram, when he was circumcised? 99? Old man. I still have 50% more of my life to get to 99, okay? Old man, 99. And so he sinned for the first 99 years of his life because he was uncircumcised. Not at all. The commandment had not been revealed to him yet. Positive law, or what my son Sam calls sometimes plus law, it's a law that requires revelation, and until it's revealed, there's no obligation for that law. Abraham was unbaptized. Did he sin because he was unbaptized? No, of course. Why not? Because baptism is a new covenant commandment, not an old covenant commandment. You understand what positive law is? And positive law in the Bible is related to specific covenants, historical covenants. So the positive laws of the Mosaic Covenant, for example, you can't eat pork. That's a positive law, only known by revelation. When Peter's up on the rooftop of Simon the Tanner's house in Joppa, and he sees the sheet coming down from heaven, and there's all kinds of unclean animals, he says, you know, he hears the voice and says, take and eat. Not so, Lord. I've never done that. And the Lord says, whatever I call clean, don't call unclean. By doing that, He made all of these things clean. How many of you had bacon this morning? I did. You know what? I didn't break any positive law by having bacon, because I'm permitted, under the New Covenant, to eat bacon, and it was pretty good. I also had pork sausage alongside of my eggs. I figured it would be a long time till I ate lunch, and I had a long drive, so I'd have some bacon, I'd have some pork sausage, and have some eggs. To the glory of God, I hope, okay? To the glory of God. That's a positive law. And so when Paul speaks about, to a Jewish person, this statement, circumcision is nothing and uncircumcision is nothing, is astounding, because their whole identity was taken up with the fact that the males are circumcised. And yet Paul says, it is nothing! But what is everything, keeping the commandments of God? And so there's something that is everything. That's kind of a weird way to put it, isn't it? In contrast to the positive laws that are nothing, there's something that is everything, and Paul calls it the commandments of God. Now, if we were to track down what Paul means by entole thau, entolon thau, the commandments of God, you know what he's referring to? Well, let's look at Romans 13 for a moment. Romans 13:8, "Oh, no in anything except to love each other; for the one who loves another has fulfilled the law for thee..." What's in your Bible? What's it say? Does it say commandments? Same word, same word that Paul uses in 1 Corinthians 7:19, "For the commandments," you shall not commit adultery, 7, "you shall not murder," 8, 6, "you shall not steal," 8, "you shall not covet," 9, "and any other commandment are summed up in this word, you shall love your neighbor as yourself. Love does no wrong to a neighbor; therefore, love is the fulfilling of the law." When Paul speaks about the commandments of God in 1 Corinthians 7:19, he uses the same language that he uses here in Romans 13, to speak about some of the ten commandments as a summary of the whole of the ten commandments. You see what we have in 1 Corinthians 7:19? We have a contrast between positive law, a law that requires revelation, and moral law, a law that continues at all times for all peoples and is written on the heart. That's what Paul says in Romans, chapter 2. It's written on the heart, even of the Gentiles. They don't have the law, but they do the things of the law. They know the law, because it's written in their hearts. So we see a distinction in the Bible between moral law and what we call, what theologians call, positive law, plus law, revealed law, and moral law. So that's just one text that I like to go to, because it's so wonderful and so clear. And it does trouble me. Like I said, the ESV translation is honest, it's true, but it's like the cataracts on my eyes. It prevents you from really seeing the contrast that Paul lays out. Circumcision is nothing. Uncircumcision is nothing. I can imagine a Jewish man standing up and screaming, what do you mean? But keeping the commandments of God is everything. Brothers and sisters, that's what we want to do. We want to love Him with all of our hearts and love our neighbors as ourselves.